And the Glendale Housing Authority. Can I have a roll call for the city council, please?
Council members, Raymond.
Here.
Friedman, Najarian.
Here.
Weaver.
Here.
Mayor Quintero.
Here.
And roll call for the housing authority.
Authority members, Raymond.
Here.
Friedman, Nsie.
Here.
Perazian.
Here.
Quintero.
Here.
Weaver.
Here.
Chairman Najarian.
Here.
Mr. Clerk, may we have your report?
Agenda for the November seventeen, two thousand and nine joint public meeting of the Glendale City Council and the Glendale Housing Authority was posted on Thursday, November twelfth, two thousand and nine, on the bulletin board outside City Hall. Item before you today is Director of Parks, Recreation and Community Services regarding status of program planning for the fiscal year two thousand and ten, two thousand and eleven, Community Development Block Grant, CDBG Emergency Shelter Grant, ESG and Home Annual Action Plan. At one A is Council Motion Approving Fiscal Year Two Thousand and Ten, Two Thousand and Eleven Program Priorities for CDBG and ESG Programs and the Home Annual Action Plan. At B is Authority Motion Approving the Fiscal Year Two Thousand and Ten, Two Thousand and Eleven Program Priorities for CDBG and ESG Programs and the Home Annual Action Plan. At C is a Council Motion Approving the Fiscal Year Two Thousand and Ten, Two Thousand and Eleven CDBG Funding Allocation Plan by Funding Category and Issuance of a Request for Funding Proposals to Qualified Community Agencies and City Departments for Social Services and Capital Improvement Projects. And at D is an Authority Motion Approving the Fiscal Year Two Thousand and Ten, Two Thousand and Eleven CDBG Funding Allocation Plan by Funding Category and Issuance of a Request for Funding Proposals to Qualified Community Agencies and City Departments for Social Services and Capital Improvement Projects.
Mr. Starbird.
Yes, I go to Jess Duran, Acting Director of Community Development Housing, for the staff report. Jess.
Thank you, Mr. Starbird. Mayor Quintero, members of the City Council, Chairman Najarian, members of the Housing Authority. As the city clerk alluded to, this is the stage in the annual CDBG program planning process where we come to the City Council and Housing Authority to recommend approval of the fiscal year two thousand and ten, two thousand and eleven, CDBG program priorities. A fiscal year two thousand and ten proposed preliminary funding allocation plan by funding category, which is a general plan. And this year, including a brief discussion and direction from the City Council and Housing Authority regarding a special request that the city has received from Path Achieve Glendale. And then lastly, to ask for authorization to issue the request for funding proposals to the community and to city departments as we do every year. In addition, it's important to note that another unique feature about this year's program planning is that concurrent with the development of the annual fiscal year two thousand and ten plan, we must prepare a new five-year strategic plan. So our current five-year plan is expiring this year, and we're working now for a new five-year strategic plan for the term two thousand and ten to two thousand and fifteen, which we will bring to you in March, at the same time that we bring you the funding recommendations for approval to submit to HUD. So in terms of an overview, as you all know by now, each year, City Glendale receives close to six million dollars in entitlement funds from the Federal Department of Housing and Urban Development to administer community development, housing, homeless, and economic development programs in the community. The city is charged with developing the annual plan for the use of these funds, which is based on a community needs assessment. The most prominent program in the plan development process with a proposed annual allocation of three million, seven hundred and thirty thousand dollars is the Community Development Block Grant Program, which we refer to as CDBG. This program has the greatest level of community participation, local discretion, and greatest demand for services. Therefore, this report is focused on the fiscal year two thousand and ten, two thousand and eleven, CDBG program. And to develop the annual CDBG plan, HUD requires that each year, the city conduct a community needs assessment to identify local needs and priorities. So typically, that's the first thing that we do. Now, this year, because we're also working on the five-year plan and the need to determine program priorities that would apply for a five-year period, we conducted a much more extensive community needs assessment and outreach program than we normally do. And I'm very proud to say that we received direct input from one thousand, three hundred and eighteen residents in our community through meetings and small discussion groups, interactive surveys at community events, a mailed out questionnaire to six thousand residents in Glendale, for which we received a twenty percent return, which I think is excellent. We conducted an Internet survey, stakeholder focus group discussions. And in addition, we conducted an analysis of an updated two thousand and seven census report. As part of the surveys that were completed by residents, we also received one hundred and fifty-two written comments, which I included in your packet, because some of the comments were very, very interesting, and they pretty much ran the gamut in terms of what people felt about the kind of job they were doing here in the city of Glendale. So as a result of all of this input, the fiscal year two thousand and ten, eleven, and five-year program priorities have been developed and are before you for your approval. I also want to mention that the Community Development Block Grant Advisory Committee reviewed the findings of our community outreach, and they evaluated the input that was received from all of the various sources of input and determined that the needs and priorities expressed by the community are basically the same as they've been for the last couple of years. So we didn't make many changes. We expanded on a couple of the priorities, but they're basically the same as what you've seen the last couple of years. Therefore, these priorities are now recommended for City Council and Housing Authority's approval and for publication in the RFP as required by HUD. And I don't want to read out the list of the priorities, but you'll recognize under social services, again, it's at-risk youth programs, it's employment programs, it's crime and public safety, it's childcare for preschool. Senior services is becoming one of the top priorities, health services, mental health, et cetera. And under neighborhood services, health facilities, libraries, parks, crash and debris abatement were some of the top priorities, as well as streetlights, handicapped accessibility, and other improvements. Then housing, I don't have to tell you, the comments we get back is affordable rental housing and homeownership assistance and multifamily rehab keep on coming up. And the homeless priorities are the ones that you've seen in the last couple of years. Then in terms of HUD eligible target areas, as reflected in Exhibit Three, they also remain the same until we complete the two thousand and ten census. And we can probably expect changes in HUD eligible low-income census tracks after the two thousand and ten census. But basically, for now, those target areas are south of Broadway, excluding the Adams Hill area. And then we have two census tracts in west Glendale, west of Grandview, on both sides of Glen Oaks. Those would be the target areas where we would be doing any neighborhood revitalization or public improvement projects or public community center projects would be in those census tracts. Then as part of the program planning process and transparency, it also requires the development of a proposed CDBG funding allocation plan by funding category based on our needs assessment and based on the city's best estimate of the availability of entitlement funds and reprogrammed funds. So in fiscal year two thousand and ten, staff is estimating a six percent increase in our entitlement from the current year. Therefore, the recommended CDBG funding allocation plan holds three million, seven hundred and thirty thousand dollars, which includes an entitlement of three thousand five hundred and unprogrammed funds, the amount of two hundred and thirty thousand dollars, which we propose programming to the ten, eleven year. The funding allocation plan by funding category, as reflected in Exhibit Four, breaks down as follows. Seven hundred thousand or twenty percent of our entitlement, which is what HUD allows for administration, five hundred and twenty-five thousand or fifteen percent of our entitlement, which is a HUD limit for social services, which does represent a twenty thousand dollar increase over the current year allocation for social services. And the plan includes two thousand five hundred and five thousand for capital neighborhood improvement projects, which is basically the same amount as the current year. This amount for capital improvement projects also includes recommendations for two million and one hundred and sixty-nine thousand for pre-designated projects comprised of our Section one oh eight loan payment as a result of a loan we took out for the Edison Pacific project. It includes a four hundred and ten thousand dollar allocation for Southern Glendale code enforcement and one point five million dollars for park improvement projects. And then that would leave three hundred and thirty-six thousand dollars undesignated that would be available to the community under an RFP. And as part of the city council's consideration and approval of a preliminary funding plan, including pre-designating the council's priority projects, the city has received a special request from Path Achieve Glendale for consideration of a CDBG capital improvement funding allocation of two million dollars for an acquisition and rehabilitation project. Needless to say, this is a very significant request. As you all know, Path Achieve Glendale is the main service provider that the city relies upon to implement the city's homeless continuum of care, including programs to serve the chronic homeless. Path Achieve Glendale currently operates its programs at four thirty-seven Fernando Court, which has housed the access center and emergency shelter for over ten years. The current lease at their facility at Fernando Court expires in June, two thousand and ten. So the Path Achieve Glendale Board has set a goal to acquire and rehabilitate a property and to be able to expand services rather than continued leasing at their current site on Fernando Court. As a result, the Path Achieve Glendale Board has submitted a request to the city for assistance to consider designating CDBG funds for their acquisition project in order for Path Achieve Glendale to look for properties and to be able to make offers, knowing that it has the funding that it needs. Path Achieve Glendale is looking to purchase a thirteen to fifteen thousand square foot building compared to the Fernando Court building, which is only seven thousand, five hundred square feet. Path Achieve Glendale estimates that the project they have in mind will cost approximately four million dollars. So Path Achieve Glendale proposes to contribute two million and would hope to receive two million dollars in assistance from the city of Glendale to meet their funding objectives. If the city council were to determine that the Path Achieve Glendale acquisition and rehabilitation project is a high priority, the city council could authorize staff to apply to HUD for a Section one oh eight loan, just as we did for the Edison Pacific project. That was a one point eight million dollar loan seven years ago. And based on preliminary discussions that we've had with our HUD representatives, we feel that there is a good possibility that HUD would approve such a loan and that an application could be approved within four months. The loan term, as of this date, would be for ten years. The current estimated interest rate would be three point six three percent. The total finance charges on a two million dollar loan would be four hundred and thirty-nine thousand dollars. So total loan amount would be two million, four hundred and thirty-nine thousand dollars. The average loan payment every year would be about two hundred and forty-three thousand dollars. And the loan would be secured by the City of Glendale General Fund, just as the current Edison Pacific Project loan is. We only have three payments left on our Edison Pacific Project loan, by the way, including the current year. The city council could also consider, again, if the council deems that this is a very high priority and it wants to pursue being able to provide assistance to Path Achieve Glendale, the city council could also consider a combination of a Section one oh eight loan and reprogramming funds from its pre-designated allocation, say, for example, from the parks' pre-designated allocation, or possibly a one million dollar grant now and then a one million dollar Section one oh eight loan instead of a two million dollar Section one oh eight loan. And I also want to point out that the CDBG Advisory Committee did review and approve the proposed funding allocation plan at its meeting on October twenty-first. Also at that meeting, we did discuss the Path Achieve Glendale project, and so the advisory committee is fully aware of the potential of the council assisting Path Achieve Glendale. Once approved by the City Council and Housing Authority, the funding allocation plan will set the parameters for staff to be able to issue the RFP to the community. As mentioned earlier, at the same time, we're going to be working on the five-year consolidated plan for the city of Glendale. So in conclusion, again, at this time, staff is requesting council and the authorities' approval of program priorities for fiscal year two thousand and ten, approval of a proposed funding allocation plan for fiscal year two thousand and ten, two thousand and eleven, a direction regarding the Path Achieve Glendale project, and an authorization for staff to go ahead and issue the RFP. So this concludes my report. I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Are there any questions? I do. Mr. Najarian. Could you please repeat your very last series of items that you wish direction
We need approval on the program priorities. We need approval of a proposed funding allocation plan by funding category, because when we issued our RFP, per HUD requirements, we have to let the committee know how much funding is available for the RFP. And then we need to know what direction you might have regarding the Path Achieve Glendale request.
Thank you. Okay, I have two speaker cards. Herbert Milano, followed by Nick Lamb.
Good afternoon, Mayor Quintero, members of the city council, members of the housing authority, and staff. My name is Herbert Milano. For the past several years, I have been paying attention to, I think roughly since around two thousand and one, to some of the social deficiencies and problems that are generally met by the CDBG funds. Year after year, what we find a common theme is that there isn't sufficient, there aren't sufficient funds, to really provide some type of sustainability to many of the nonprofits who are out there, taking care of or trying to assist the less fortunate of our society. So every year, there are decisions that they need to make with regard to, you know, who needs to be cut from this, or, you know, how much would be unfunded. Year after year, you know, we hear of significant problems, you know, with youth and crime and drugs and so on. And in my opinion, the CDBG community doesn't meet often enough, should be meeting, in my opinion, throughout the year. And we don't have a true assessment on a continual basis of the unmet need. Oftentimes, when a program says, look, we're going to have eighty thousand dollars for youth employment, we don't know how many kids could take advantage of employment, especially those kids who come from at-risk families. And there doesn't seem to be a truly comprehensive and systematic way of looking at these programs and at the problems that we face, so that we can get some type of performance indicators to see if we're going in the right direction, to see if these problems are finally being met somehow. We don't mind pouring money into more police or additional equipment for policing, and as necessary as it is, it's in my opinion that we're not putting enough energy and effort and planning and policymaking at the beginning of the problem, you know, where the leading indicators begin to show up. And oftentimes, they begin to show up when kids are already in the third grade. About four years ago, some of you remember my telling you the situation with my son. He was mugged four blocks away by a teenager who had dropped out of school, who had attempted suicide, and who was pretty much living on his own because his mother could not take care of him. And I wonder how many of those are there in Glendale where we actually need to address the issue of these kids and families at risk? Now, most of you who've raised your children to, you know, successfully know how much effort it requires to really bring those kids successfully. When my kids were small, my wife did not work or work part-time, and she was there, available to them all the time. When they got to high school, we switched. I started working less, and I was available there for them all the time at Glendale High. And that's the kind of energy that it needs to really bring up kids successfully nowadays, I think. But many families, single parents, you know, single income, or marginal income, or unsustainable income, how in the world are they going to make it if we as a society cannot take care of that? We don't mind spending the tens upon tens of thousands dealing with police issues and courts and prisons and so on, and we don't seem to be making a truly proactive policy approach to dealing with these problems, especially on a community that is generally as wealthy and as steady as Glendale. I mean, it's a community where we get to know everyone, pretty much, who's who, who makes decisions, who are the nonprofits, who leads the nonprofits. In this community, we get to know that, and we have a chance to really provide sustainability to these organizations that are providing those very essential needs. So I believe two things, that from the city council end, we need to put a lot more emphasis in placing really targeted objectives to solving these problems or at least addressing them, creating proper policy, and then evaluate if that policy works or doesn't work, and what is the unmet need. Eighty thousand dollars, you know, for all the youth employment for Glendale, for the city, it's incredibly a small amount. And we could do so much if we were to segue policy needs for the guard to, let's say, conservation and water and things that we could do, and bring money in from maybe GWP and say, look, let's find another forty, fifty jobs for these kids installing meters for irrigation and so forth. So many potentials that are there, but only if we put together all of these various different entities that could actually help solve the problem. It is my hope that we start looking at those policy initiatives in a different way in the future. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, and members of the city council, and also members of the housing authorities and staff. My name is Nick Lamb, and I'm speaking to you on behalf of Path Achieve Glendale, as I serve as the chair for the Board of Director of Path Achieve Glendale. I want to let the city know that I'm so proud to be able to have a partnership, a truly partnership, a public-private partnership, that the private sector working hand in hand together with the public sector to try to tackle the homeless problem in the city of Glendale. And I'm even more proud to say that since our establishment in two thousand and six, we have served more than four thousand homeless people in Glendale, many of them families with childrens. I want, you probably heard from the staff earlier that the lease that we have for our facility on Fernando Road will be up next year. And we have been in contact with the landlord to try to see if we can buy the property. And the landlord is not interested in selling the property to us. And because of the development around the neighborhood, it is also possible that the landlord might consider developing the property when the market turn around. And if that is the case, there's no chance for us to continue staying at our current facilities. Our current facility also has another problem, and that is it is undersized. We only have seventy-five hundred square feet of building. And because of the undersized facility, we have to combine the single individual, homeless individual, and the family with children. It should not be like that, but we have to because we don't have space. For our staff, the space is so crowded that we have to double up on desks, and it hinder our performance to serve the needy. But most importantly, because of the size, we cannot provide all the services that we should be providing to the poor folks, the homeless population. So it is always the desire and intent of Path Achieve Glendale to have our permanent facility, so we can continue to play our role to serve the homeless population in Glendale. Hopefully, one day, we can eliminate this population. We are currently looking for building in the size of thirteen to fifteen hundred square feet, so roughly double the size of what we have right now. And the Board of Director of Path Achieve Glendale has committed ourselves, led by Pacific BMW, that we will raise two million dollars if the city is willing to cooperate with us and help us to come over with another two million dollars. And together, we can join hands, buy a facility, renovate it, and we can be in Glendale permanently, try to perform a social service for the city that is dearly needed by our homeless population in Glendale, which is desperately right now calling for help because of the bad economy and all the hard times they have to go through. As I speak to you today, you know, we have, we are in process of doing a due diligence on a building that we had tied up a few weeks ago. We have identified certain building, and there's one building on San Fernando Road in an industrial area that we foresee should not cause any kind of trouble to the existing resident, because there are no residents around, mainly industrial type of business. And we tied the building, the building is about thirteen, fourteen thousand square feet. And the cost, they're asking for two point seven million. We negotiate and we tie it up for two point six million. We still want to continue to negotiate. We want to try our best to get the best deal, because it is prudent for us as a board member, as a group. And if we ask the city for money, we better try our best to get the best deal for a partner to come in. We see the city as our partner. We want to work hand in hand with the city. We want to get the best deal for us and for our partner, the city of Glendale. So today, I appear in front of you to ask you to help us, to give us a hand. And the Board of Director led by Pacific BMW, we have committed to raise two million. But this is provided we can get the cooperation from the city, who also likewise come over with another two million dollars. So I hope you can find a way to get the fund for us, either through a HUD loan or partly the CDBG fund and partly the HUD loan, and we can work together and build a better world for all the needy and homeless people in the city of Glendale. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Lamb. That's the final card. Why don't you have a seat? Okay, Mr. Starbird or Mr. Duran. So one of the ways to proceed would be through the, on this particular issue, would be for a Section one oh eight loan that, in essence, the city would guarantee the repayment?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, let me comment on, kind of generally about that, and then Jess can fill any details, because he's much more familiar with these structures than I am. It's the same sort of loan structure we used for funding a portion of Pacific Edison. HUD essentially advances you future CDBG funds that you then repay through CDBG. The thinking here was that although we have the capacity over a couple of years to commit the entire amount, this way, you could use the one oh eight loan program so that we're not having a significant impact on the other uses that every year seem to rise up needing capital monies. It was a bit of a painless way to making a commitment for the program. And we've done it before. It's a reasonable interest rate, and essentially, you repay it from CDBG, which would be less than a tenth of our allocation, actually, more, less than that.
About a tenth.
About a tenth of our allocation each year. So other agencies that might compete and depend on capital funds wouldn't be significantly diminished in that competition. From sort of an editorial standpoint, usually when we hear partnerships, it's usually the city brings the bulk of the money, and the other side brings good interests and intentions, but short on money. I don't know when, in my time in Glendale, I've seen this kind of a true private sector commitment to assist a program that is usually searching for champions to assist it. The homeless is not the most glamorous social program to be supportive of. And Mr. Lamb and Pacific BMW, in a big way, has brought their wherewithal and their influence in truly an altruistic way to assist this program. If you approve moving forward, our recommendation would be to pursue the one oh eight loan structure. And then we've talked with Mr. Lamb about the possibility of setting up a separate nonprofit corporation locally to actually become the receiver of the property, once it's identified and acquired and all the financing is completed, which then would interface with Path and Path Achieve to make it available for the programming. Again, programming that essentially the city pays for through our federal grant programs and CDBG, so it's really a city program run through our contractor, Path Achieve. Other details, Jess?
Um, no.
And reading the report, I agree, I think that's the best path to take. Are there other comments or observations? Mr. Najarian.
Just on that Section one oh eight loan, so at three point six percent, total finance costs are four hundred thousand over ten years. So the total cost of that two million would be two point four million.
That's correct.
So each year, it would be foreseen that we would make a two hundred and forty thousand dollar payment from our CDBG capital fund allotment to Path Achieve.
Correct.
Would that foreclose us from making any additional? I mean, would, it's a big chunk. Would Path Achieve be coming back in those ten years that we're repaying the Section one oh eight loan and request additional funds for that building? Or would this pretty much be their ask for a ten-year period in the capital program?
We should note, it's not anticipated that they'd be coming back, although the building that they have been looking at affords some housing. building that they have been looking at affords some housing opportunities because of the nature of the building currently, but as we've talked with them, this would be committed to the initial acquisition and the homeless shelter component. There is part of the building looking at that indeed, if, if the sale's consummated, that really creates a tremendous opportunity for kind of a second project, looking at the possibility of, of some SRO housing, transition housing or permanent housing, just because the nature of the building has both an industrial, commercial use, as well as some, some housing units on top. We might very well be back to you as a second project to look at how we could assist with either rehab or, or other work on the housing component of that. And we really see that as an opportunity, not a burden, it's really a potential opportunity to meet some needs, as you saw spelled out in the community assessment, need for a homeless transitional housing. This really lends it, this building, if they're successful, really lends itself to that. So, so I think, Mr. Lamb, I'll look to you to, to acknowledge, this is the anticipated commitment on the homeless Path Achieve component of the initial acquisition and interior improvements of the building. We would likely be back at a later time to talk about a housing component, there would, there would likely not be CDBG funds, would likely be other housing funds that could assist with utilization of the housing component of the building.
I mean, I support Path Achieve wholeheartedly. I just want to make sure that we take a long-term look at, at what this would mean. Let's say they build this out, they obtain it, is there now a need for operation and management funds, which are oftentimes the, the tough nut to crack?
Well, actually, we're doing that now. That is, that's a Path Achieve homeless programming now.
Would that be increased due to their?
No, I don't think that's anticipated.
Increase of 50% of additional space?
Ms. Chairman, Najarian, at this point, it is not anticipated that we would have to request additional SHP funds for the operations.
Okay, because you know as well as I know, there are many, many groups out there that rely on CDBG.
Yes.
And we have to share our love amongst, amongst these groups.
Now, the main funding source for operations is, is, is a different funding source, it's SHP funds. Three weeks ago, you approved the 2009 SHP NOFA funding application, so that's where this funding would come from. We would also have a, a lien on the property, so we would have some remedies if something terrible happened down the road. Our other, our other thought is with regard to the housing units, is for the 2010 NOFA application, to apply for a project-based, permanent supportive housing project for chronically homeless, for those SRO units, which would be additional funding to come to the project. The other alternative is to use existing funding sources, existing housing funding sources that PATH already gets for those SRO units if we can't get new monies from HUD. So there are a variety of alternatives that we can exercise.
My last question is, in light of our restructuring of Community Services Department under Parks, is there any efficiencies saved in the overhead costs that we, the administration costs that we allocate for our CDBG funding? It's about $700,000. We ask every year, why is it so high? But in light of this restructuring, are there any inherent savings and efficiencies that have been created by folding it into Community Services and Parks?
Ms. Chairman Najarian, one of the realities about the realignment is, there were a lot of costs that the CDBG administration was able to share with Housing Administration, which we will have to transition away from, so if, if anything, it's going to increase the burden on CDBG administration. So it, there won't be any necessary cost.
I thought this restructuring was supposed to create efficiencies in our departments.
Efficiencies in service are looking for.
Service, yes.
And I think in time, it will, it will, we will begin to see opportunities for cost efficiencies. But this one aspect that Jess has noted, as we take programs that were centralized and begin to put them in two different departments, we're now working through these unique situations where we were funding some costs from multiple sources, and now that we split the programs up, how do we continue to justify the multiple sources? I think we're, we're tackling each of those individually and finding ways to address that without putting more burden on the general fund, and I'm not, in time, you're, you're still always limited to how much you can spend on administration. We're not saying, as I noted when we came, when we recommended to you proceeding with the reorganization, no immediate significant efficiencies, but I think over time, we will find opportunities to either enhance programs with existing costs, or to find ways to reduce costs while maintaining programs. But I can't tell you right now on the surface, those have been readily apparent.
Any other comments? Mr. Drayman?
Well, Mr. Lamb, you are a very unique individual, I must say, and one that we are fortunate to have in our city. Very seldom do you run into people who commit themselves so thoroughly and completely to a cause and a project and an organization. So thank you. Perhaps I have known you a shorter amount of time than my colleagues, and almost from the day I met you, you've been talking to me about Path Achieve, and that was certainly before I was a member of this council by a couple of years. I admire what you do, and I admire what your organization does. I've had the opportunity to serve lunches to the homeless on behalf of Path Achieve at their events. I had the opportunity to speak at their events in the past, to listen to some of the people that they have had the opportunity to help. And by the way, for those who don't know, who might be looking in or listening, Path Achieve is not an organization that houses, just simply houses or warehouses the homeless. Path Achieve gives skills and provides dignity to people who are most in need of, of those As a mayor, I had the opportunity to contact our county supervisors to attempt to find extra financial assistance for Path Achieve. We've complimented Path Achieve as a council and as individual council members, I know because I've been at events where you all have spoken. We have praised their efforts, and I think it's time to move beyond, though, the personal support and the joint slaps on the back in terms of just telling them what a great job they're doing. It's time to assist Path Achieve to find a permanent home, so that they can continue to do for the homeless what we as a city are unable to do on our own. So for that, those reasons, Mr. Mayor, I will, I plan to support this request, and I think the best way to accomplish that is through this loan process, and so I will be voting in support of that. Thank you.
Any other comments? Ms. Barazian?
My comment is about the report. I wanted to thank the community, the housing staff for the report, it's well done and detailed. And secondly, about the community needs survey. I was reading all those comments, and half of the people were asking about rent control. Some of the, some of them, them were thanking, thanking the city, some of them country, and some of them are disappointed with the job the city does, but I don't know. And most interestingly, and most did wonder me, the one that says, get rid of all flowers in the city. I just don't get this comment. Some of them suggesting to, each person should just plant a tree, and some of them telling that, get rid of the flowers. I don't get this part. Anyway, thank you for the report.
That was Mr. Weaver.
Well, Ms. Mayor, I just, I can't add anything more than to say, one of the privileges of serving on this council the past years has been, been to know somebody like Nick Lamb, who has given far more back to the community, not just in speech, but in action, than most people that I've had the privilege to meet. So, hey, I sure can't refuse the offer. I just hope it works, Nick.
Any other comments? Okay, well, I will join everyone else in thanking Mr. Lamb and the people that work with him, Rodney Khan and the staff at Project Achieve. I've been working with you for a long time, and you do a superb job, and you don't just do a superb job here in the city of Glendale. When I compare other homeless shelters and other organizations that work in this field, it's no question, you're, you're at the top. I think you're really dedicated, and we're lucky to have you here. I think this is a wonderful idea, I think we're going to benefit a lot of people with this project. The square footage is needed, and ultimately, if we do move to an SRO type of situation, I think that's going to work really well. Sometimes people need that first little sort of step before they can go on to, to other things. But as Mr. Drayman mentioned, it's about the services the Project Achieve provides, that's what makes it so important. People are homeless for multiple reasons, there's not just one category, as we all know, and they're able to get to the core of what it is that brought that person to a homeless situation, remedy it, and move on. And we have just so many, we have so many positive cases, I mean, you can literally track the, the people that have been provided services and gone on to be much more productive. So anyway, I think this is a great idea, and so I'll just ask for whatever motions are appropriate. Mr. Drayman?
Mr. Mayor, I will move one, let's see, I guess we can take these in tandem.
A.
So I will move item 1A and C for the council.
Second.
Roll call. Did you have a comment?
No, I want to move on the other one, when it's time.
Okay, roll call. Councilmembers, Drayman?
Yes.
Friedman, Najarian?
Yes.
Weaver?
Hi.
Mayor Quintero?
Yes.
And I'd like to move 1B and D for the authority.
Second.
And are we clear with the direction on the, Mr. Drayman, are we clear on the direction of the 108, section 108 loan application?
I'm taking it as support to pursue the 108 loan application.
Yes.
Okay.
There's no other comments? Roll call, please.
Authority members, Drayman?
Yes.
Friedman, Mincy?
Yes.
Barazian?
Yes.
Quintero?
Yes.
Weaver?
Hi.
Chairman Najarian?
Yes.
All right, next.
Move to adjourn for the council?
Second.
Move to adjourn for the authority?
Second.
The authority is adjourned.
Sorry. Took my line.
I certainly did.
I was already thinking ahead to what we're doing next.